Yes, yes.
Stay in the stairmaster. Stay in the stairmaster.
Yeah.
Are you taking?
Yeah.
You got a card and come in?
Can I write you some cards to residents?
She's taking the house.
I figured. Yeah, do that. Yeah. And if somebody wants to pay them, they can. They're not residents. Yeah. They'll get a card and shoot. And so.
But residents, they don't have to pay. They're still probably signing that sign.
Yeah. Yeah. Give them.
Well, it's funny if you can.
Yeah. The big thing.
I'm waiting on that.
I just.
I just do.
James over there?
Yeah. He's running over there in the blue sport car.
Yeah.
How's it going?
Good. Good.
That's all we got. Dog. Steal the one. We got his case.
Which one?
Oh.
I had talked.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. I'm sorry.
What's going on? I'm good. I guess I need to tell them it's not on our deal for tonight. I don't know what they're doing here.
It's just a spelling.
This is the only thing that's happening tonight.
I'm prepared.
I know. They're, they're very sad about my vacation. But it's not on our deal for tonight.
Then I'm going to.
So I don't know what they're doing here.
Must be nothing.
Must be nothing.
How are you?
I'm happy too. I must have an old email address for you.
Always have.
Brought to your things and all the jet.
Yeah.
How are you, man? I'm good.
Yeah.
Sunshine. I'm good, dude.
Did it?
Yes.
What happened to prepping me for these?
I think they were setting it up. They emailed me away, didn't they? You're not reading your email.
They go prep me in the.
What am I watching?
Post me.
But you don't have.
Well, there's no telling about my son.
That's true.
I could get in a bear panic and just start telling where the bunnies are being.
Please don't.
Why, Mike?
Well, that's okay.
Let's go home. You got any?
Who?
So I tried them.
Oh, yeah.
There she is.
I got her.
Beak of the devil.
Yeah, I don't think. Oh, are you Bart tonight? John's seen him?
Yeah. We all get it.
Nope. Don't see him. Man. Saint Joe.
Hey, Dave, you're slamming stuff down. What time? Well, they started seven, but I could be there a little. Let's get you out close.
Those guys go right up.
Where they go with it.
Clay and Nemo.
Are you? Think of that.
I'm not talking about you.
Uh huh. It could be.
What's he going to be? He should be home and hurt.
Oh, my God.
Because we want.
Are you? There we go. I need my son to say. He's.
Are you?
Yeah.
You.
Turn the basketball game off or give the score. One over two.
It's actually the council meeting.
Yeah, right.
All right. Y'all stay on top of it and back. Final item here is an ordinance to rezon property at 2085 East German Lane. It presently is RU1 and A1. The requested zoning is to R1. And welcome to the focus. And.
Thank you.
Tell us what you can about this.
Sure. This item is requested rezoning from A1 to R1. Single family for approximately 25.89 acre site located at 2085 East German Lane. So rezoning request is associated with an approved preliminary plat. It was approved by Planning Commission for the site. The request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. And no opposition has been received at this time.
And make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass this resolution. Is there any discussion? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. Seven zeros the vote on that, and it does pass. Now we'll move to standing committees, and the first one is Community Development Committee. And the first item is resolution to approve a warranty deed transfer between Summerwood and the City of Conway for the development of the Spruce Street Cottage Project. And Kiara?
Hi.
How are you?
Good. How are y'all?
Can you tell us something good about this?
I can.
Thank you very much.
First, I would like to just give an update kind of on CDBG. We have recently finished the Steven Morgan half road improvements. If you've driven on Steven Morgan and seen that we've added parking, and we've also done drainage improvements. We've, so for the past few days it was raining, and it's working really, really well. So there's no, not a lot of standing water, so that's pretty good. As far as the other development that's going on over there, DHTC, those are, those are going up pretty fast. They are on track to be complete by May of 2019, and we have right now a waiting list of over 35 people. So, yeah, people are really, really interested in those. And we have recently ordered the equipment for the 2018 project, which was the splash pad in Fifth Avenue. And that is on track to be complete by late summer. So we're excited about that. And this is just a warranty deed, like you said, for the two lots to be deeded over to Summerwood, Ron Harris. And there's a map of which two lots he's doing right now, which are lot four and 11, and all will be 12 lots. So we just need your blessing on that.
Fantastic.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass this resolution. Is there any discussion? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And I said aye, and that's seven to nothing, and that's O. 19-04.
O4. That's resolution O4. Try and get the next one in before the train gets here. It's an ordinance authorizing personnel changes within the airport department. And Ms. Bryce, I have you down for this. Jamie?
Hi. Good evening. We are asking you, we are meant to reclassify a full-time position into two part-time positions. And the primary reason is, is for scheduling purposes, so those part-time people can work weekends, nights, holidays, that type of thing.
Make a motion, we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the readings. All in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. We have an ordinance to be read. It's ordinance O1914.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Okay, we've done that.
Make a motion.
I'm sorry.
To adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance, and is there an emergency clause?
There is not.
I do not see one.
No.
I do not see one. So an ordinance, a motion and a second to pass the ordinance, and is there any discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes seven zero.
Thank you. Seven zeros the vote on that, and it does pass. Now we'll move to standing committees, and the first one is Community Development Committee. And the first item is resolution to approve a warranty deed transfer between Summerwood and the City of Conway for the development of the Spruce Street Cottage Project. And Kiara?
Hi.
How are you?
Good. How are y'all?
Can you tell us something good about this?
I can.
Thank you very much.
First, I would like to just give an update kind of on CDBG. We have recently finished the Steven Morgan half road improvements. If you've driven on Steven Morgan and seen that we've added parking, and we've also done drainage improvements. We've, so for the past few days it was raining, and it's working really, really well. So there's no, not a lot of standing water, so that's pretty good. As far as the other development that's going on over there, DHTC, those are, those are going up pretty fast. They are on track to be complete by May of 2019, and we have right now a waiting list of over 35 people. So, yeah, people are really, really interested in those. And we have recently ordered the equipment for the 2018 project, which was the splash pad in Fifth Avenue. And that is on track to be complete by late summer. So we're excited about that. And this is just a warranty deed, like you said, for the two lots to be deeded over to Summerwood, Ron Harris. And there's a map of which two lots he's doing right now, which are lot four and 11. And all will be 12 lots. So we just need your blessing on that.
Fantastic.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass this resolution. Is there any discussion? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. We have an ordinance to be read. It's ordinance O1914.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the readings. All in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. We have an ordinance to be read. It's ordinance O1914.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Okay, we've done that.
Make a motion.
I'm sorry.
To adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance, and is there an emergency clause?
There is not.
I do not see one.
No.
I do not see one. So an ordinance, a motion and a second to pass the ordinance, and is there any discussion?
I don't think there's any discussion, but I do think it's worthy to be noted that it does indicate that it's a reclassification and that there will be no financial impact on the budget.
That's correct.
Very good. And with that information, Mr. Garrett, I'll pass it to you for a roll call.
All right. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryce. Next item is an ordinance amending ordinance O06128 incorporating new flood insurance rate maps. And Mr. Vincent? Hello, sir. How are you?
Just fine.
What can you tell us about this? So this is, we've got an ordinance to read for this. It'll be ordinance O1915.
This is about as boring as it sounds.
Couldn't do any better with it.
New flood insurance rate maps coming out.
Hey, man, I'm an insurance guy. I'm all over this.
And they're, and honestly, they're not changing much. It won't affect citizens' economy very much. It mostly has to do with the levy. So not, not a lot of news.
Very good.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the readings? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to nothing. That passes eight to nothing. Emergency clause on that, or no?
No.
None? Okay. Next item is an ordinance updating ordinance O06128 incorporating new flood insurance rate maps. And Mr. Vincent? Hello, sir. How are you?
Just fine. Thank you, sir.
What can you tell us about this? So this is, we've got an ordinance to read for this. It'll be ordinance O1915.
This is about as boring as it sounds.
Couldn't do any better with it.
New flood insurance rate maps coming out.
Hey, man, I'm an insurance guy. I'm all over this.
And they're, and honestly, they're not changing much. It won't affect citizens' economy very much. It mostly has to do with the levy. So not, not a lot of news.
Very good.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the readings? Can I do that?
Yeah.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes eight to nothing.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve this ordinance, O1915. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That passes eight to nothing.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve this ordinance, O1915. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Eight to nothing says the, we have waived those.
Make a motion for adoption in the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and second for adoption of ordinance, O1916. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Mr. Jones? Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Mr. Jones? Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Mr. Jones? Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Mr. Jones? Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Mr. Jones? Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Mr. Jones? Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
That passes eight to nothing. Emergency clause on that, or no?
No.
None? Okay. Next item is an ordinance updating ordinance O06128 incorporating new flood insurance rate maps. And Mr. Vincent? Hello, sir. How are you?
Just fine. Thank you, sir.
What can you tell us about this? So this is, we've got an ordinance to read for this. It'll be ordinance O1915.
This is about as boring as it sounds.
Couldn't do any better with it.
New flood insurance rate maps coming out.
Hey, man, I'm an insurance guy. I'm all over this.
And they're, and honestly, they're not changing much. It won't affect citizens' economy very much. It mostly has to do with the levy. So not, not a lot of news.
Very good.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the readings? Can I do that?
Yeah.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes eight to nothing.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve this ordinance, O1915. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Mr. Jones? Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Mr. Jones? Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Yes.
Any emergency clause?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
That passes eight to nothing.
We have an ordinance to be read. It's ordinance O1914.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Turn the basketball game off or give the score, one over two.
It's actually the council meeting.
Yeah, right.
All right. We all stay on top of it and back. Final item here is an ordinance to rezonate property at 2085 East German Lane. It presently is RU1 and A1. The requested zoning is to R1. And welcome to the focus.
Thank you.
Tell us what you can about this.
Sure. This item is requested rezoning from A1 and RU1 to R1, single family, for approximately 25.89 acre site located at 2085 East German Lane. So rezoning request is associated with an approved preliminary plat that was approved by Planning Commission for the site. The request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and no opposition has been received at this time.
I make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt or to waive the readings for ordinance O-1917. All in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And again, that's unanimous.
I make a motion for adoption.
Second.
And we have a motion and second for adoption of ordinance O-1917. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, eight to nothing. The next item on the agenda will move to Public Service Committee. And I guess because I'm sitting in this one, sitting in this seat, I'll do this too. Okay. The first item is an ordinance waiving bids for the purchase of the Enviro Cover Film for the Department of Sanitation. Mr. Hopper, good evening.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
So environmental cover is what we use for our daily, alternate daily cover. Over the years, we've saved millions using this product. And it's the only, EPI Environmental is the only company that provides this plastic film. And so, for your consideration, we've got a purchase of $31,229. That'll be for the year.
Make a motion, we waive three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to nothing.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, and I have it as ordinance number 18.
Second.
And we have a motion and second for adoption of passage of O-1918. Any further discussion?
Quick question. Joe, the ordinance says that in 2013, the council approved purchasing some of this stuff from EPI. Does it last that long? I mean, what you buy now, how long is that roughly going to last?
Well, this is about an annual amount.
Okay.
It was purchased as far back as 2013.
Okay, all right, so that's the first time we got. So what you're buying now will last about a year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Yes. That passes eight to zero. Mr. Hopper, we have you for another one here, I think. It's an ordinance authorizing personnel changes within the Department of Sanitation. And would you like to tell us what you'd like to do?
Yes, sir. I'd like to first start by thanking y'all for allowing us to upgrade our senior mechanic salaries a while back. We've been fully staffed since then.
Good.
And it's pretty exciting for us.
That's a good thing.
But we've determined that the two regular mechanic positions will not be utilized in the future. And we'd like to reclassify those to collector positions and start attacking the litter issue we have in town. That would also give us some redundancy in our collections program as well.
Make a motion to waive three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and second to waive the readings. All in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance as O-1919.
Second.
We have a motion and second in favor of the ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero. Next item on the agenda, thank you, Ms. Hopper, is consideration to approve a warranty deed for Rush How Development LLC. And James, you're back again.
Yes. So what this item is related to is a park impact fee credit with the Charleston Place subdivision that is just been final plated. The developer has deeded, is looking to deed a strip of land with trail improvements along there. And so, as part of those improvements, it provides an opportunity for the developer to seek park impact fee credits. And so, tonight is action on the warranty deed. At the next council meeting, we'll have some action on the, potentially action on the park impact fee credit agreement. And additionally, some potential for subdivision regulation changes that will enable some of the things within this agreement. So what we're looking at on this is the developer has provided an appraisal of $58,000 for the land, $59,950 for the trail improvements based on the construction documents that we received. So that's a total of $117,950. The potential park NP, impact fee credit that could be associated with this development is about $27,284, which could potentially leave the city on the hook for about $90,000 in reimbursement. So one of the things that we'll be seeking at the next council meeting is a change to the subdivision regulations to allow portions of that park impact fee credit to be applied to other developments within the city, so that it would allow that transfer. But again, this is really just for providing improvements in lieu of paying for impact fee credits.
James, will there be any stipulations on that moving forward if they want to do a warranty deed like that? Does it have to be a park in that neighborhood, trails? Is there anything?
So, yes. Really, what it's going to be is if we have a development comes in and they do park improvements for that development, it's still going to be the same way as it currently is. So we will know ahead in advance what the type of improvement is. We'll see sort of an appraisal for the amount of land, construction costs for the improvements. The only thing that would potentially change that is different would be the fact that those credits, based on how much, could be applied to other developments.
Any other questions?
Probably actually a good thing because if you had something like this that's way more than he needs for one particular smaller development, it makes it worthwhile for everybody to do that, apply something else. So it's maybe smaller things that may not be useful, and with some bigger, more useful things.
Yeah. And that neighborhood ties into other neighborhoods as well. And it's a good thing.
It's a very, I think it's a very good deal for the city.
Make a motion that we approve this warranty deed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this warranty deed. Any further discussion? Yes. Hi.
I'm here on behalf of Mr. Crafton this afternoon.
Good.
And I would like to say, you know, that he and Rush How had worked closely with the street department and the parks department in developing that, that strip. And so, if you're worried or concerned about that, he worked closely with them in actually completing that project. And so, and I drove by today, it looks nice. I think it'd be a good addition to the city.
Yeah, it will be. It will be. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Any other comments from anybody? Mr. Garrett.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That passes eight to zero. Thank you very much. Let's see, Mr. Fun has gotten up and he's coming to the front. Mr. Evanson, good evening. How are you? Let's see.
I'm happy to be here.
You're going to tell us about personnel changes in the Park and Recreation Department.
We had some turnover in the department, and we wanted to take that opportunity to reclassify a grounds supervisor's position to a grounds maintenance. And then, use some of the remaining money and some of our part-time funds to add another groundskeeper, so we have more people out helping maintain all our grounds. Has no effect on our budget.
Make a motion, we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and second to pass this ordinance, ordinance O-1920. Oh, we're waiving the readings first. I'm off the track again.
Just get back over.
Hey, get back up, get back up on that pony. Okay. We're waiving the readings right now. And all in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And waves pass at eight to zip.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Now, I'm back on track. We have a motion and second to adopt this ordinance, O-1920. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
After the roll is called, that's an eight to nothing vote in favor of that.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
I'm next.
You are. Next item is consideration to implement a membership system to access the McGee Center and Sports Center. That must be the Don Owens Center.
Yes, sir.
And establish fees for the pavilions and field rental for the Parks and Recreation Department. And Mr. Evanson, you're welcome to tell us about this.
Yes, sir. Our software that we currently use will handle our membership program. And one of the reasons that we're looking really hard at this is we have so many people come in to the building, all they do is sign a name. It may not be their name, but they sign a name at the time they enter. And when we have, things go on, it's hard to identify that person. And as we have more and more influx coming into the center, it's more of a safety issue for us to try to figure out who's coming and going, and easier to identify those people.
Okay.
And as far as the fees are concerned, our fees for pavilions have been the same for years and years and years. And looking around at other cities, even the $50 for the day is below what most cities charge for four hours at a pavilion. So we're just asking that to be increased to $50 a day. And for field rentals, if we have league teams, they get practice time. And then, if they want additional time, they would pay for an hour and a half of use. And for competitive teams that want to rent space on our fields, we'd charge them the same.
Is this like other communities?
Yes, sir.
Does it match up pretty well?
It's more than fair.
Okay, okay.
What about when the volleyball teams use the McGee Center for tournaments and stuff?
They pay.
Do they pay? Will be the same as like this baseball and softball fee?
Yeah. Now, for tournaments and stuff, they're all, and if you come in to rent, if you want to reserve a court, we charge a fee to rent a court for volleyball or for basketball.
And speaking of tournaments, as far as memberships and ID cards, I'm sure this is how it works out. But if they have a volleyball tournament or a basketball tournament, I mean, you're not checking IDs for that team.
Because the team should know who's.
Yeah, because they've got the facility rented, and they're bringing the teams in.
Well, you scan the ID cards in. Is that what your plan is?
It'll be, for those of you, not to just mention one fitness app, but like a ten fitness card. You just come in and scan it. It'll have your picture and all your information.
And seniors get in free, right?
Seniors get in free. You and I are there.
And I do want to clarify.
All Conway residents getting free, right?
All Conway residents getting free, and seniors in Faulkner County getting free.
Okay, so the non-resident annual membership is if you're under 60 and live in Faulkner County.
Correct.
Or could somebody who lives in Benton?
Correct. If you want to drive from Benton and come up here, it's $150 bucks.
Okay. The $150 is the only thing that gives me pause, because I think about people who live in the county, Beaver Fork or close by, come here, shop, spend, do all the, you know, raise sales tax, which pays for this stuff. So $150 a person is a lot if you're a family of four, for the facilities that they're getting. You know, there's no workout equipment, there's, you know, there's courts and.
Well, to give you an example, if you want to use, if you want to use Cabot's walking track, Cabot sells you a one-month walking pass for $10 a month, and that's all you get to do is walk. You don't go play basketball or use anything else.
Yeah, I guess I, I just think $150 a person is a little too high, and maybe there's something for another grade down with your Faulkner County resident under 60. You know, because they do shop here. They do, you know, generate that income and sales tax for us.
Is it a year only? Is there, can you do monthly as well, or is it just?
We've got it set up. I mean, we have the ability to do that if they want to charge it to their card, their credit card, we can do that.
Or a family rate or something? I mean, it just seems like.
We could do that. Really, we just wanted you to give us the thumbs up for a membership program. We plan to come back because there's some questions that we still need to get comfortable with, and that's what age can you drop a kid off and leave them? We've recently had somebody call and say, can I drop my five and nine-year-old off? And, you know, what we're looking is like 13 years of age. If you're 13 and above, you can come in without an adult. If you're below that, then you need to have an adult. We also need to have, if I have my grandkids come into town and I want to take them to the center, then we need to have a daily fee set for that. And how, how do we, where do we set that price at?
Yeah. And I understand the safety issue, because I walk at Don Owens quite a bit. And you're right, I just sign my name and my time in and read some of the other names on there. Most of the time, you can't even read them.
Nope. John Wayne comes, John Wayne comes a lot.
And there are a lot of people out there, yeah.
I would be curious to know, like Greenbrier's facility, what do they charge for Conway folks to come use their facility, I wonder?
I've got, I didn't get Greenbrier's. I've got like Malmell, Cabot, Benton, places like that that are more in line to.
People out towards Beaver Fork if they come.
Yeah. And so I guess if we could have like maybe a little in-between scale, I'm happy for somebody from Benton, if they want to pay $150 a year, let's charge them. But if they live.
Outside of Faulkner County.
Yeah, yes. They live outside of Faulkner County versus inside, because we already have some special conditions for seniors. So maybe a little bit lower rate and/or some sort of family deal.
That can be scaled, I know, at Malmell, when they redid their facilities. They have a resident fee and a non-resident fee. And, but they don't, it's not a county thing, it's not anybody.
I don't want to overstep my bounds, but would it be okay if Mr. Evanson would put it together a little different scale to address?
I think so. I think this is a good idea. Yes.
It's a good idea. And thank you for raising the prices on the pavilion. I think that's good. And Mr. Ellsinger has decided that he would like to speak.
Not necessarily. I will, but I've got an individual here that would like to.
Good. Welcome.
If that's appropriate.
Welcome. Would love to have you.
If you set up a certain, another time for fees discussion, then that means coming back and coming back.
I bet you. Come on.
We'll take input.
Yeah, yeah. If you'll come and identify yourself and where you live.
My name is Robbie Davis, and my address is Two A Belane. I live in Conway, just outside of the city limits. I would be a senior, I would get in free, and I do walk Don Owens a lot. This Sunday, rainy day, cold day, my son and his family went. A yearly fee would be $750. They can't do it. They won't go. It's ridiculous. And all they would do were playing basketball, shooting, practicing free throws and stuff like that. Another family outside of the city limits. So I'm begging you, please, relook that. I have been in there, yes, I sign in, you can read my name, but I'm wondering if the people behind the desk cannot sit there and, or at least say, I'm sorry, I can't read your name, write it again. Make these people accountable. Last night, was it, I was up there, a little guy was upstairs running around. Mom was up there on the phone walking, but he was running this way, that way, everywhere. And I know there's cameras, but nothing was done. So I think they need to do their job. I understand pavilions charging, I understand if you have to go up on the fields. But this fee for just coming in for fun, I'm sorry, $10 a family for a year, something, but please, don't discriminate against these people in the county who do come into Conway, who work, who eat in the restaurants, who do everything, they pay their taxes. Don't penalize them. Don't discriminate against them. And I thank you for this.
Thank you, Davis. We appreciate it. We appreciate that. Yes. Yes. Mr. Ellsinger says aye. Can you maybe put a little different scale together? And Ms. Davis, not to ask you to come back again and make the comments again, but you're on the record now.
Can we, I know, can we approve part of this? Because I know baseball season's cranking up. Can we approve the baseball fees tonight?
And the reservations for pavilions.
Maybe everything except the non-resident annual fee.
I mean, it's. You give them this, the idea that a membership system's acceptable, and we can, we can get all the details put together and come back and present those, and what age groups and daily fees or, and that together.
And Ms. Davis might be on to something. If it's family, if it's relatives of someone that lives in Conway, there's another scale for people.
We can make it really complicated for you, Steve.
It's, we've got all the information from like Malmell, Cabot, and those, and Benton and Bryant, so.
Steve, I think Conway Regional Fitness Center maybe is 12 for kids to come up by themselves upstairs without a parent, so you might look at some of that.
We've got a higher age than that upstairs by themselves.
I think it's 16.
Yeah.
I read the sign every time I come up the steps.
Thank you for driving, and don't be like.
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing y'all say is let's go ahead and make a motion for the pavilions, the baseball and softball field rentals, and then have Steve come back with a different.
He'll be glad to.
Okay?
Oh, yeah, that's great. I mean, like I said, we've got everything in place, and we can probably get it up and running in two months. There's not a deadline for that.
Okay, good. All right, we have a motion and second to increase the pavilions and the baseball and softball field rental, and we're going to hold the membership until we fine-tune that a little bit. So any other comments? All in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was a technical term, that.
Thank you very much.
Let's see. Public Safety Committee, police and fire. And Mr. Knight, good evening. Consideration to remove items from inventory for the Information Technology Department first.
Yes, sir. As you might remember, five or six months ago, we came to you about replacing user systems. We replaced about 100 of those in 2018. Most of those are on this list to be removed, because I have a store room that we can't walk through, and the fire marshal told me I had to do something about it. So anyway, these will either be auctioned or disposed of as e-waste, depending on what kind of shape they're in. Hard drives get wiped, all those sort of good things.
I make a motion for removal of these items from inventory.
Second.
Motion and second to remove these items from the IT department. Any discussion? Then all in favor of removal of this inventory signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance accepting and appropriating grant funds for the Conway Police Department SWAT team. We have an ordinance for this item, it's ordinance O-1921. And Chief Radlin, good evening.
Good evening. This is part of our annual Homeland Security SWAT grant, and we're asking to spend $3,503.45 to purchase an upgraded camera system for an existing SWAT robot that was purchased off the Homeland Security Grant.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Readings are waived.
And for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption of ordinance O-1921. Any discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero. And the next item is an ordinance appropriating reimbursement funds for various entities for the Conway Police Department. And Chief, one more time.
It's just a general accounting ordinance. There's the same thing you've seen before. I have nothing to add to that.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings on ordinance O-1922. All in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously, and.
A motion for the adoption of the ordinance. Second.
Motion and second for adoption of ordinance O-1922. Any discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
And that passes eight to zero. And Chief, you've got the final three on here.
Excellent.
a motion for the pavilions, the baseball and softball field, field rentals, and then have Steve come back with a different price.
Come back with the toys gone, with the membership.
He'll be glad to.
Okay?
Oh, yeah, that's great. I mean, like I said, we've got everything in place, and we can probably get it up and running in two months.
Okay.
There's not a deadline for that.
Okay, good. All right, we have a motion and second to increase the pavilions and the baseball and softball field rental, and we're going to hold the membership until we fine-tune that a little bit. So, any other comments? All in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was a technical term, that.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, Public Safety Committee, police and fire, and Mr. Knight, good evening. Consideration to remove items from inventory for the Information Technology Department first.
Yes, sir. As you might remember, five or six months ago, we came to you about replacing user systems. We replaced about 100 of those in 2018. Most of those are on this list to be removed because I have a storeroom that we can't walk through, and the fire marshal told me I had to do something about it. So, anyway, these will either be auctioned or disposed of as e-waste, depending on what kind of shape they're in. Hard drives get wiped, all those sort of good things.
I make a motion for removal of these items from inventory.
Second.
We have a motion and second to remove these items from the IT department. Any discussion? Then, all in favor of removal of this inventory signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance accepting and appropriating grant funds for the Conway Police Department SWAT team. We have an ordinance for this item, it's ordinance O-1921. And Chief Radlin, good evening.
Good evening. This is part of our annual Homeland Security SWAT grant, and we are asking to spend $3,503.45 to purchase an upgraded camera system for an existing SWAT robot that was purchased off the Homeland Security grant.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Readings are waived.
Send for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the readings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. I have it as O-1923.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt ordinance O-1923. I do have a question, chief.
Yes, sir.
In the body of the ordinance, it says $8,645, but in section one, it says $8,615. It was just a $30 discrepancy. I just wanted to make sure that we had the right number.
Yes, that should be 8645.
45?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll make the appropriate changes on your packet.
Yeah.
Make that 8645. Any further comments or discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
And that passes eight to zero, and I don't have anything further. Our next meeting will be February 26 at 6:30 in this building. We invite you to come back, be a part of the festivities. I'll take a motion for adjourn.
adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Get up and go. We'll adjourn. Thank you.
[inaudible]